Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the November 25th, 2013 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered by Pastor Jim Barlow, Director of the South Street Ministry located at 2113 East South Street, near the corner of Bumbi in District Four. This ministry has been in existence since June of 2011 and is local outreach ministry of the First United Methodist Church of Warden Park. And the vision of the ministry is God's transformation through community partnerships and the church is absolutely achieving that vision. South Street Ministry has been an outstanding community partner with the city and especially with Commissioner Sheehan's office. In fact, tomorrow, the church is providing all of the ingredients for Thanksgiving dinner to accompany Commissioner Sheehan's turkey giveaway at Reeves Terrace. The next month, the church will participate in the Commissioner's holiday bike giveaway. South Street is really making a difference in the lives of the Reeves Terrace residents. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led today by District Six Commissioner Samuel Leans. If you all please stand.
Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, in a week where we emphasize giving thanks, may we take this time to give you thanks and praise for the abundant blessings that you've poured out upon us. Accept our gratitude as today we seek to honor our fellow community in leading and inspiring others, to view challenges as opportunities, change as potential, and ultimately to see hope and promise on the horizon of a new tomorrow. We remember those who have gone before us paving the way for the opportunities that we embrace today. We remember the lost, the hungry, and the sick. We hold close those whom society has chosen to exclude and oppress. Grant that all who are gathered here today may be mindful of their responsibility to the people of this city and that they may find strength in you as you provide joyous celebrations, areas of need requiring attention and clarity within all decisions that will be made. May all of us gathered here today continue to be challenged to give our best, to find grace where mistakes have been made, and with confidence step towards that hope and promise of tomorrow through the decisions and acknowledgements that will be made today. For this and for your many blessings, we give you, loving and gracious God, all the joy, all the thanks, and all the praise. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance.
........................................................................
All right, Madam Clerk, let's call a meeting to order. Would you call the roll and make a termination of the quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Lyneum.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor Yevak Warum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business is consideration of the minutes from the workshop agenda review and city council meeting minutes of November 4th, 2013.
So much.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. On favor of the motion indicated, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed motion carries. Well, we have no presentations today, so I'll just move right into the mayor's update. And I would like to wish District Three Commissioner Robert Stewart a happy birthday. He's celebrating his birthday on Wednesday, November 27th. I hope you have a great day, and if you care to disclose which birthday it is, I'll leave that to you.
I can't disclose it, but I have a twin sister who'll be 60. Thank you for asking.
Okay, so it's a significant birthday. You'll all join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to Commissioner Stewart.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Stewart. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So I would like to reflect just briefly on the events of last week. It's a very significant week in the life of the city to launch and celebrate CR eight new permanent iconic pieces of art on Monday, and then to follow that up the very next day with the announcement that we, the city of Orlando, the Orlando City Lions are being awarded a Major League Soccer franchise, our second Major League franchise. So what a great week. And Commissioners, I want to thank you all for your vision and your leadership as we continue to make Orlando the best city in America. I want to invite all of our Central Florida residents and visitors to join me and the city Commissioners in celebrating the holiday season. Commissioner Stewart, I know, is going to talk a little bit more about the lighting of the "Happy Holidays" sign on the old OUC Dr. Phillips Building. We kicked things off last week with that, and holiday shopping will start this weekend. And I want to encourage everybody to shop on Small Business Saturday in our Main Street districts on November 30th. The Jack Casanzas Star will be installed this Sunday morning over Orange Avenue. Holiday movies at Lake Gila will start on Thursday, December 5th at 7:00 PM with A Christmas Story, and will be shown every Thursday through Christmas. And finally, our annual holiday lights on Friday, December 6th, when we will light what I think is probably the biggest Christmas tree that we have ever had in the city of Orlando. So I'd invite you to all of those. On Tuesday, December 3rd, we'll commemorate the opening of Orlando's newest residential tower, Sky House Orlando, along with an adjacent park named for Kevin Tijaski, who we tragically lost last year. As all of you know, the Philippines were recently severely devastated by a typhoon, which has left thousands dead and hundreds of families homeless. I want to encourage our city employees and residents to help victims by making a donation to the council for Filipino-American organizations of Central Florida. They'll be collecting canned foods, clothing, toiletries, and monetary contributions on November 30th at the Mark Street Senior Center between 1:30 and 7 o'clock. Last week, at the National League of Cities Annual Congress of Cities in Seattle, the city of Orlando was recognized for our commitment to helping young people eat healthy foods and be physically active. The recognition was part of First Lady Michelle Obama's "Let's Move" initiative. It is dedicated to solving childhood obesity within a generation. Orlando is one of only 18 communities recognized nationally that have made the most progress. FPR's Division Manager for Recreation Rodney Williams accepted the award on behalf of the city, and congratulations to our family parks and rec. park for all their hard work in that regard. And speaking of awards, Ford Hospital announced their inaugural Healthy 100 Workplace Wellness Award winner as early as this month. And the city of Orlando earned a Silver Award. I want to thank all of our employees for participating in our wellness programs. And I'm going to give this a really good shot. I want to welcome two students from Genevaire, Argentina, Fabrizio Criado. Did I get that right? Close? Okay. Milagros Sapatara Labia. Close? I should have let Commissioner Ortiz do this. And their travel companion, Ms. Maria Elena Vistaia.
That was a good one.
That was good? Okay. They are traveling here and visiting Orlando for the next couple of weeks. They were chosen through a competitive process in their hometown. They considered academic achievements, community involvement, leadership skills, poison presentation. And over the next couple of weeks, Fabrizio and Milagros will be visiting with various departments in the city, so please be welcome here to Orlando. And then, thank you. I just want to mention one thing on the agenda, and that's one of the fire items is a grant that will provide a training simulator and training equipment for our first responders for use in our Take Heart Orlando program, which is going to teach everybody in the city of Orlando hands-only CPR. With that, we're going to move directly to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items are acted on through a single vote of council. We give each of our members an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda and also update you on items of importance from their individual districts. We rotate the order in which the Commissioners go, and today Commissioner Ings is first up.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Item C6, the Business Assistance Program Agreement between Clearview Systems, also doing business as Ripit Sporting, and the city of Orlando. They're located on McLeod Road. This is a great opportunity for them and they're also, and Orlando, because they're expanding their business. They're going to build a 26,000-square-foot corporate headquarters on LB McLeod Road. They currently have 21 full-time employees now, and with this, they plan to create an additional 100 new, excuse me, full-time jobs. So their total investment for this project is about $2.7 million, so congratulations to you guys for your investing in Orlando. And then also a small business facade program agreement between Distribution 7021 MCS Incorporated and the city of Orlando, and they're located at 6320 International Drive. And we want to thank you for your investment, capital investment into the city of Orlando, as well as your new family-friendly buffet-style restaurant. So we wish you well. Also, on November 1st, myself and Representative Bruce Anton, District 46 State Rep, presented the Fall Community Job Fair, and this was held at the Dr. James R. Smith Center at 1723 Bruton Boulevard at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The job fair was free, open to the community. Over 700 job seekers had registered to attend, and another 300 had showed up to attend. Resume and review job readiness experts were on hand to enhance interview skills. Felon-friendly employers and the Department of Corrections reentry program specialists were in attendance and very helpful. Over 30 companies participated, and they were looking for full-time, part-time, and apprentice positions, workforce. Mobile unit was available to provide additional opportunities, and coordinators of this event included my aide Cynthia Wilsons and my aide Sylvia Wills, Larry Williams of Semian Resource and Development Center, Alicia Stallworth, Legislative Assistant, and Pamela Newton, District Executive Assistant to Representative Bruce Anton, and of course Representative Bruce Anton. One of our vendors, Prefecto Travels, stated that the job fair was very successful for them. They have 20 to 25 applications and training, and five currently working from the job fair. Matrix Communications Services hired 10 people. The U.S. Army hired four people, and I would like to thank Marlon Poty and his team at the Dr. James R. Smith Center for coordinating the logistics of this event and such great success. This past Thursday, I hosted the seniors' Thanksgiving luncheon for the District Six seniors, honoring our seniors who have contributed a lifetime of love and care for their families and our community, and this was held from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the L. Claudia Allen Center at 1840 Mabel Butler Avenue. This event was also sponsored by Universal Orlando Resort and the Han Foundation, and thank you for your support. We served approximately 190 seniors, and then we also had takeout dinners that we sent to seniors. And then I'm inviting everyone to come out Friday after Thanksgiving for the Thanksgiving concert, District Six seniors Thanksgiving concert that will be held from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the L. Bethel Temple of Orlando located at 3,000 Bruton Boulevard. This is a free event, and we're just asking family members to bring their seniors out. Featuring Stella Award winner Vicki Winans will be on hand, Charlize Simmons, Charles Curry, and the Mind Boys. This is sponsored by Universal Orlando and WOKB Radio, and we have other sponsors as well, but we would certainly invite everyone to come out and partake in this event. This is going to be a great event, and it's always good. This is our fourth annual event with the Thanksgiving, and I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone and their families, and thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District One. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. As always, I try to put past and future events in District One on our city website, so I refer you there. While we're waiting for Commissioner Ortiz, I will make one comment. Was fortunate enough to, this is the stretch part, was fortunate enough to attend the ribbon cutting for the Central Florida Veterans Memorial dedication out behind the new VA Hospital in Medical City. Please go out and, when you get a chance, and look at that. It's very well done. It honors all deceased veterans from Central Florida as far back as World War I. The neat part is the committee is trying to put a story with each one of those individuals, where they were raised, their family, how they passed, and their service. So to the extent you have friends or family that you could maybe help that committee fill in those blanks, I know they'd appreciate it because their goal is for everybody that's on the wall to have a story to go with that, and it's very well done. So with that, Commissioner Ortiz is back. Mayor, that's all I have.
I'm sorry, I almost choked there.
Are you okay, Commissioner?
Yes, I think so.
We all know hands-only CPR.
We can handle that. Hi, Chief.
Just ladies, just ladies, no guys.
You first, Chief.
All right, Commissioner, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Veterans Parade, Red Tail Monument dedication, and the Central Florida Memorial Park Foundation dedication ceremony. All these events were a huge success, and it was an honor for me to participate in all of them. Congratulations to everyone involved in the planning and execution of those events. I participated in the celebration of the 40th anniversary of Fire Station Number 11. Even though it's Number 11, it numbers one of the number ones in the whole city, right, Chief Miller? I know you can say anything, but I'm very proud of those guys over there, and they had a great event, and we were able to spend some time together. Those guys are great over there. They really take care of our district, so congratulations. I also attended the placement of Kevin Tijaski's memorial plaque at Baldwin Park Bridge. I'm going to say this in Spanish, "Honore quin honore merece," which means "honor to deserve the honor," and he so very much deserved the honor and a lot more. So it was a great event. Thank you, Mayor, and all the Commissioners for the involvement and our staff for putting such a great event together. I'd like to take this opportunity to, once again, congratulate Ms. Maeda Roberto and the Summer Business Partnership, the staff, the board, for their first guest event that was a huge success at Okebuen Restaurant. Let me tell you, the place was packed. You could hardly walk through there, and it's of great pride to all of us because it started five years ago, almost six years ago, as a business council, and it has evolved into one of the greatest associations in the city, and we're very proud of our people and what they're doing with the community, with the staff here at City Hall, and what else, the Commissioners and the Mayor. So congratulations. During our District Two Neighborhood Leaders Council meeting this month, we had two great presentations, one by Mr. Roski Roberts about Abort Florida, and the other one by Ms. Joanne Carragher about Best Food Forward. Thank you both for doing a great job. During the last three years, Sedano Supermarket has sponsored a Thanksgiving luncheon to our Englewood seniors' first program. Last Thursday, they did it again. Close to 100 seniors were the recipients of this event, and Sedano is a great community partner, very grateful to them and what they're doing with our community. And related to today's agenda, ordinance one, first read, I'm very, very excited that we're moving forward with an amendment to Chapter Seven of the Procurement Code creating Section 7.1102, Veterans Business Enterprise Preference. It's about time we're moving forward with our veterans. They deserve way more than that, but I think this is a great step towards helping our veterans and those coming back from certain of our country. And once again, we're very proud of them. We had great events last week, and thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioners and staff for this, for taking this step forward and helping our veterans, which so much they deserve. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz, and Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me also say a special shout-out to all those who helped with the Kevin Tijaski Bridge over in Baldwin Park. It was a wonderful, moving experience as a wonderful reminder of Kevin and the work he has done in our city. And to those of us who've been involved, Baldwin Park really will be his legacy for generations to come. For me, November 2013 is a month I will never forget. I turned a big 60, and of course, it's memorable because there's a lot of things going on in District Three. I won't spend a whole lot of time covering a lot of those because each of us could cover all the activities going on in our district, and we'd be here for several hours. But I do want to mention two things that have occurred. The first is the Red Tail event that we had. So let me just share a brief couple of photos with you. We honored six of the Red Tail pilots from the Tuskegee Airmen. It was such an honor to be there with these guys. These guys are genuine heroes, and I'm so thrilled to have just been with them. Commissioners, thank you all for being there. The event was a wonderful event, is a culmination really of the entire weekend of the Veterans Day Parade and the work that we did that. So thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. Well, any other pictures there? Well, let me just, let me share these quick thank-yous. Thank you to Orlando Science Center, Joanne Newman and Jeff Stafford and their group, Vision of Flight, Mike McKenzie and George Morning, our city staff who did absolutely wonderful job putting it all together for us, Marcia Hope, Goodwin, Cassandra Lafferty, April Michael, John Perone, and Julie Eus, and of course, most importantly, Sid Levy, who dedicated the monument to us. So with that in mind, I have a quick presentation I'd like to make to the mayor. So Mayor, if you'll do me a favor and stand up, please.
While the guys were here, I had them take the opportunity to sign, and this is the largest gathering, this is the largest gathering of Red Tail pilots in the last 50 years, and they're here together, and I had them sign this as a gift to you. So...
One, two, three, one. One, two.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not telling you where to hang it, but I'm just telling you the guys from the Veterans Advisory think it ought to be in the Veterans Conference Room. Is that right, Michael? That's right, Captain? Is that right, Captain? Thank you, sir.
I think we can work that out.
But it's really an honor to have been with those guys. Let me also say thank you to those involved in the holiday sign. Commissioners, thank you very much for what you've done. We have restored a wonderful piece of history to our city. We opened it up, turned it on, I guess, in 1950s, somewhere along the lines, went dormant in the 80s, turned it back on again in 1992, was there for two more years, and then went dormant, and we got a chance to turn it back on. It looks great. So if you have a chance to go down I-4, a chance to visit around Lake Ivanhoe, get a chance to enjoy it, happy holidays and happy New Year is just a great way to ring in the season. I want to say a special thanks to the Commissioners for helping out with the funding of this, and Mayor, of course, to you. Tom Connery from our staff, who did just a great job in coordinating all this. McCree General Contractors, who donated some of, much of their work. AC Signs, who did the work. Millennium Electric, OUC helped fund the actual operations of it. Ivanhoe Village, which has raised the money for the maintenance of it to continue so that we don't be in the same position we were 20 years ago. And then, of course, Pauline Eaton and our other staff over there. And one last thing before I conclude. Saturday night was the annual boat parade for Lake Ivanhoe at Jingle Eve and part of the Lake Ivanhoe Village, and I want to say a special congratulations to Commissioner Patty Sheehan. She won the human-powered boat category. She was the top performer of the, of all those entries, all those one entries that we had. But I had a photograph I was going to show, but I just didn't get it over there in time.
Thank God.
But she looked great. Looked like one of Santa's elves and was on her paddleboat all around, and just did a great job. It was such a wonderful community spirit over there, and I love these, the holiday events. It's just a good example of that. So Commissioner Sheehan, thank you for being part of that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Four. Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Stewart, for not sharing how I look in spandex, because nobody knew it was me until everybody said, "Isn't that Patty out there?" But it was, it was, it was a lot of fun. My back's a little sore. I got caught up in the moment and paddled around the lake three times and didn't realize that's a little bit more than my endurance could handle, but it was a lot of fun. Just got a, we have a couple, I have a couple of community events as well. We're, we're going to be doing Reeves Terrace Thanksgiving, but it's only for Reeves Terrace residents, so if anybody's hearing it today, sorry, but I can only do 167 families with my sponsors, so that's an awful lot for us to do. But I want to thank Beggar Barrios Architects, Brassfield and Gorey, GAI Consultants, Usler Companies, South Street Ministries, Massey Communications, Publix at Paramount, the Orlando Housing Authority, and the Old Florida National Bank. Because of them, every household in Reeves Terrace is going to have a turkey and a full dinner. So, and again, no tax dollars have been used for that. And I've heard that the turkey mascot is going to make their first appearance at the Reeves Terrace Thanksgiving, so we look forward to that. The Happy Holidays sign is absolutely beautiful, great job, Commissioner Stewart, and it's really great to be able to restore a part of Orlando's history, and we also need to make sure that we preserve that beautiful Ivanhoe building as well and make sure that that never gets torn down because that is an absolutely breathtaking building. But it was just a lot of fun to participate in that and to show Orlando's history. Unfortunately, our Christmas decorations are up, and they're very disappointing. They don't light, and we used to have those really cute little historic trees, and you know, cheaper is not better, y'all, so I think that we, even though we have a two-year lease, unfortunately, when I voted on this, I didn't realize we were going to get unlit Christmas decorations. I mean, Castleberry, you know, Coe does a better job than we do. Not to call him out, but you know, we're the city of Orlando. Can't we have something nice that lights up for real? I mean, you know, so anyway, I hope we can look to that agreement and see how, if other smaller municipalities can figure out how to light their Christmas decorations, I hope that the city of Orlando can figure out how to do that as well. And on the agenda today, got some, got a couple of really disappointed infill developments on the agenda today, items C1 and C3. Unfortunately, I'm starting to see some new development in the O1 areas of Colonial Town, and again, these are really, really large structures. They've been giving memorandums of standards to violate the setbacks. Some of these are not very attractive, and I really want to work with the Planning Department to start getting some better infill in our, in our beautiful neighborhoods because these projects just are not, they're not pleasing in appearance, and it's all we can do. But again, the city of Orlando needs to do better with infill development. The market is back, and we need to build quality structures, not just whatever can be put up. On the Historic Preservation Board minutes, I love the discussion on appropriate mass and scale and not rewarding demolition by neglect. I really appreciate that they did that, and only forgive the code enforcement fines if the structure is compatible with the neighborhood, which I think was a really good thing for them to do. On item G2, the Public Art Advisory Board minutes, there was discussion on the clarity of the public art ordinance upon reflection and concerns I have in the aftermath of CI Orlando, which I think is a great project. I do think some issues need to be addressed. I will be drafting a memo to each of the Commissioners and Mayor regarding this. And on ordinance first reading number one, I want to recognize that the Mall at Millenia is here, the brunch ordinance, thank God we're getting that done. I think that's a great thing and good for business. And also on the front yard vegetable gardens, I'm delighted to see there's some folks here. I think we need to promote sustainable practices like urban chickens and vegetable gardens. I think it's been a great thing for our city, and we need to start doing these things that are friendly to our residents and things that will help them grow their own food, especially with these difficult economic times, but also with sustainable agriculture practices. East End Market's opening up. People are really interested in their food and where it comes from, and we need to be encouraging that, not discouraging that here at City Council. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
And we'll move to District Five. Commissioner Lyneum.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few announcements. Let me go to the agenda first, though. You want to pull out, I think it's the Heroes Commons C4. I'm really, really proud to work with our staff and the Realtors Foundation. I know it's Frankie, Frankie Callan, I can't remember the full name of the foundation. But while I was in Seattle last week, we had a wonderful discussion, a roundtable I was invited to, on homelessness, veterans homelessness. And here in our district, we're trying to, we're getting ready to move forward on six houses. I don't know where Orin is, but it's a great project. I don't know where Orin is, but it's a great project at 138 and 214 Benson Street in Paramore, 1208 West Jefferson Street, 1201 and 1205 Pope Street. We've had a community meeting to bring the idea to the community and they were very, very excited about this great cleanup. Also, I hope by the end of December, we've got the extension for the Coalition for the Homeless to extend its completion date. But in the meantime, I really am asking maybe Dean or someone for me, I don't know who it is, that we really look toward, how are we going to get those men off of Terry Street? They just cannot stay on the street, blocking the sidewalks, tearing up what little sod is still left there. We've got to do no loitering, no standing, no sitting or whatever else. And especially by the end of December. I think we need to bring it to council with that, something that we need to pass an ordinance, but all reinforce ordinance that we already have. So that that facility will be as good a facility that it can be. So enough on that piece. I'd like to, just a few things. I was in a restoration of civil rights workshop with Senator Siplin over at North, New Covenant Baptist Church. And I think that is something we really do need to look forward to because these men and women need jobs. And the only way we reduce recidivism is to make sure we have jobs for them. Commissioner Ings and I hosted Affordable Care Act meeting on the eighteenth with the navigators and we will have another one on December ninth. We went on the site, went straight to it, no problems. I don't know. Some of those problems have been worked out there very quickly. So if you need healthcare, you need to go to that particular site or come to our meeting at the Smith Center on December ninth at six thirty. November nineteenth, we did a lot of painting and cleaning. And I always like to give the ladies, Jody and Jan and Tommy, kudos because when you go to someone's neighborhood to clean it, paint the walls, plant material, it's Green Up Orlando and Keep Orlando Beautiful. These are the things that I like to invest and it makes, it brings value to the community. So just want to express that with you guys. Well, everybody knows this is a real special time for me in Orlando. The Wildcats won. Oh, boy. You should have heard Congresswoman Brown talking that trash. She said she wanted to see my face after the game. I don't know where she ran to. But we had a great time, all of us there. It was, it was wonderful to see them. But during the Florida Classic, we also had another great time. We had a tennis tournament. Rodney Williams, Alfredo and all the staff over there, especially Jim at the Tennis Center. We have the best clay courts in central Florida, probably in Florida, for a city particularly, a municipality. And I don't think anybody ought to, well, I'm hoping they can't. We've got that in the Creative Village terms, that those tennis courts were not going to hurt or to some are replaced somewhere. And it should stay right there. That's a great amendment for that community. So I want you to know, during the Florida Classic, we not only have football and golf, we also have tennis for our third year. So I want to say a real special thanks. And the great food at Ja-Ja's, Za-Za's, what's that Cuban restaurant? Nobody knows. That food was absolutely good. It was very, very good. And Mayor, we didn't talk much about the soccer. I guess everybody was on TV, saw it, that we now got Major League Soccer. It was a great, great thing the other night. But the city soccer was with Mayor Mayor Dyer this morning over at Sun Life with Walter and all of them, where the attention has been placed on how you keep your food. Trying to get more nutritional food in these pieces of the city, particularly when there's a corner grocer that doesn't have nutritional food. And we were there with Ebony Nutrition, with the Rock People, reducing obesity in children in central Florida, with so many volunteers, Barton Marlowe and just so many, to take pride in preparing and buying refrigerators to keep better food and help the owner store better food and healthier food and get away from some of the damaging things for us. So I wanted to say real thanks to Mayor Dyer. I think we gave away one hundred and fifty turkeys. I think I left on about twenty-five, but it was a great way to celebrate the holidays and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Sozer. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Ings. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Let's, without objection, recess the City Council meeting, convene the CRA meeting. First order of business is meeting minutes from the CRA Board of October seventh, 2013. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
There's a motion, second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. All right, Thomas, you want to take us through number two there?
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor. And Commissioner's, item number two is approving the downtown facade and building stabilization program funding agreement. I have a brief presentation to talk about this project to you. Of course, our, our program offers a three-year interest-free deferred loan for facade and or building stabilization programs to existing properties within the downtown CRA. You can see the various criteria there. The pertinent criteria here is under commercial buildings. For such buildings, it provides up to $20,000 in the Uptown Aeola Central Business District area. And that's pertinent to this particular application. The applicant here is the property owner at 934 North Magnolia. And this is a shot of the building as it exists and with the new work that's being Says the applicant is actually proposing more than seventy thousand dollars of facade work on this particular building. Just to be clear, there are actually two buildings that they own up at that address that you will see totaled. This is only on one of them. The overall project budget exceeds $2 million as per the acquisition and all of the work they're doing. Seventy thousand is just for facade work on this one particular building at 934. And you see the work categories there. Facade Grant Review Committee has reviewed and has recommended approval of the amount up to $20,000. And therefore, staff is requesting CRA approval of the downtown facade and building stabilization program funding agreement between the CRA and North Magnolia Properties LLC for 934 North Magnolia, subject to review and approval of the City Attorney's Office and authorizing the Chair of the CRA and the Executive Director to execute such funding agreement. Any questions?
Commissioner Sheehan.
Thomas, is there a picture of that building? Because it was, it came up, I think it wasn't ready to.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll go back.
Come up yet. Okay.
This is existing. Let me see that.
Okay.
And this is proposed. Okay.
Commissioner Stewart.
Tom, I forgot to ask you, Thomas, what is the plan for the other building? Do we expect to have them, the same thing come back to us again for the other building? Or do you know?
No, they only, they've only requested, they've only applied for a grant on this particular building or deferred loan on this particular building. But the buildings are actually being designed the same, as you can see in this, this rendering. The other building is just north. You can see it there, but it will have the same treatment.
I'm familiar with the property. The question is, do we expect the other to come to us sometime in the future? Is this tied to the owner or tied to the address?
Tied to the owner at this, at this particular point.
Okay.
And I think this, this is the, the program doesn't allow but one per owner per address. They have not indicated, you know, that they would be coming to us in the future.
Okay. I would assume that they probably would sometime in the future. That's what, I mean, I'm asking if they're going to do one, then they'll do the other.
Yeah. We've been working with them quite some time as they've gone through the ARB process, the Clearance Review Process and whatnot. But the application, again, we're responding to the only application we have.
Okay. Thank you.
See, we need a motion on that. I move. Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Stewart. Discussion, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Any further business to come before the CRA, Thomas?
Mayor, there is none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will adjourn the CRA and reconvene the City Council meeting. We have no mid items. We have no OPEB items. I'm going to skip hearings ordinances on first read and go to second read, Madam Clerk. Hearings ordinances, second read. Let's start with number one.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida, certain real property generally located north of the Osceola County boundary, south of Clap Simmons Duda Road, east of Narcouzy Road and west of the Split Oak Forest and comprised of two hundred and eleven acres, more or less, providing for severability, correction of scripters errors and an effective date.
Move to adopt. Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Do we have any requests for comment?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Gina Suborva. I'm a senior principal planner with Orange County Government.
Okay, I also have Dana Crosby-Callier from Orange County.
She's right there.
Okay. Are both of you going to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
So for the record, my address is 201 South Rosaline Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32801. I'm just going to read the letter of objection and we have submitted supporting documents to the clerk as well. On behalf of Orange County, I'm here today to object to the city's adoption of ordinance number 2013-51, the southeastern oaks annexation. The county has raised three objections and other concerns in the letter provided to each of you today by, via email. To briefly summarize those objections, the southeastern oaks annexation area does not meet the criteria of area appropriate for annexation as required in Section 171.043 Florida statutes. First, the southeastern oaks annexation area is not compact as this term is defined in Section 171.031 subsection 12 of Florida statutes. For an area to be compact, annexation of an area might not create a pocket. Annexation of the southeastern oaks area will result in a pocket of incorporated area within the unincorporated boundaries. Second, the southeastern oaks annexation area is not contiguous to the city's existing boundaries as this term is defined in Section 171.031 subsection 11 of Florida statutes. For an area to be contiguous, the separation of the territory the city seeks to annex from the city's existing boundaries should not result in a situation where the inhabitants of the newly annexed area and the existing city residents are precluded from becoming what is called a unified whole with respect to services, trade or interaction. Thirdly, the approximate two hundred and eleven acre annexation area is not developed for urban purposes as this term is described in Section 171.043 of Florida statutes. Section 171.043 subsection 2 of Florida statutes requires a city annex land that is developed in whole or in part for urban purposes. The proposed annexation area is not at all developed for urban purposes. For example, relevant to the proposed annexation area, the county staff has evaluated the county's future land use map, showing the current area having a rural and agricultural future land use designation on the properties included in the annexation area. Also, the utility services and other infrastructure available in the area, for instance, the area is served by wells, septic tanks and a small rural road. And the map of the surrounding area, which depicts many properties with numerous environmental conservation easements and designation, as well as the existing zoning classification on the property, which is a farmland and rural district designation. So all this on the properties within the annexation area. Therefore, the future land use, the zoning designation, existence surrounding properties are all rural in character. The county does not believe that the proposed annexation area is in any way developed for urban purposes as this term is described in the law. The comments exhibits and other backup and support of the county's objections are summarized in details in the county's letter dated today, which is made a part of the record by this reference and by the card copy that was handed to the clerk prior to the hearing. Again, we urge the city to not adopt the ordinance 2013-57 and the corresponding ordinance that hasn't been heard yet, number 2013-64, that changes the growth management plan designation on the subject properties. And we urge the city and the county to designate sometime to convene and works for the county's concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Did, is Miss Crosby-Callier going to speak as well?
No.
We certainly value the input from the county and are always appreciative of that. But I will note that we sent you notice on July ninth of this receipt of the proposed petition for voluntary annexation and invited you to provide written, written comment to the Technical Review Committee that met in August or come appear at the MPB or come to first reading. And this is the first time that we've heard from you during the course of this process. So it's kind of a little late in the process to be raising these objections, but we'll certainly take them under consideration. So thank you for your appearance. Commissioner Sheehan.
Yeah, I just pulled up the map and they were talking about it being an enclave and it's very confusing in terms of what, where's city and where's county? So I'm having a difficult time reading the map myself to figure out exactly what the concern is.
It connects to the city across Narcouzy Road. So it's unincorporated north of the piece of property and Osceola County is actually on the south part. So it would not be an enclave. It's actually connected to the city across Narcouzy Road.
Oh, so this, this part, the word Narcouzy comes down at the corner is actually city?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, we also have an appearance request from Karen Pasha, I believe. Is that right? I'm just having trouble determining if that's an age.
Pasha, that's correct.
Okay, Pasha.
Lake AJ Village is situated east of Narcouzy Road, just south of Orange County. There are one hundred and eleven lots with just over one hundred homes on minimum one-half acre parcels. The population is diverse in age, culture and profession. We are a private gated community. We have been here for about thirty years and are responsible for maintaining our own roads, tennis courts, boat dock and common grounds. We pretty much take care of ourselves and look out for one another. We found out about southeastern oaks from an article in the Orlando Sentinel on September sixteenth. When we sent a notice to Calandra Jones noting the oversight of not including Lake AJ residents with the four hundred foot courtesy notice, this has since been remedied. Ms. Jones kindly sent us a notice of the meeting today. We have some concerns that need to be addressed. What implementations are in place to prevent drainage into Lake AJ, the land and the lake? What kind of buffer do you have in place between the two developments? We would personally like to see a green natural buffer, maybe a high berm with some native plantings. We would like to request that a dark sky lighting be implemented throughout the entire development. We recognize the Parks Department, the Parks Department involvement in saving as many of the trees as possible. We would also like as many of the large oak trees to remain as an additional buffer. And when construction begins, please remind the workers not to park under the large oaks because of the damages it causes to the root structures. Our Board of Directors has met with the developers and are planning a commuting, community-wide meeting in January. I appreciate the time you've given me today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gray, did you have a question for the speaker or just a comment, General?
No, just a comment. Thank you. I was just going to simply say to Mayor and the other commissioners, I've spent some time with the staff as well as the, the property owners. Look, in District One, we certainly support growth, but we support responsible growth and development. And I'm convinced, after talking to staff and to the landowners, that we'll be able to incorporate a lot of the concerns of the area residents as we get through the PD process. So I'm convinced we're on the right track. We, as you said, Mayor, we respect their objections, but I'm convinced we can do it in a responsible manner.
Kyle, would you like to address anything? Or are we good?
No.
Okay. All right. Further discussion, hearing not all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Let's go back. I just wanted to do the annexation before we took up the ordinance relating to the future land use designation. So if we could move, revert back to hearings ordinances on first read, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate certain real property generally located north of the Osceola County boundary, south of Clap Simmons Duda Road, east of Narcouzy Road and west of the Split Oak Forest and comprised of two hundred and eleven acres, more or less, as urban village in part and conservation in part on the city's official future land use maps, establishing a new subarea policy for the same property to provide a maximum development program and required land development regulations, providing for severability, correction scripters errors and an effective date.
Move to approve. Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Ms. Pasha, you had indicated, I think on your card, for this one as well? Okay. No? Okay. All right, back to Ms.
Oh, don't try it. Gina Suborva, Principal Planner, Orange County Government. We would like to illiterate the comments.
We will include the same.
Reiterate the comments.
The comments from the last ordinance will be reflected as being made for this one as well.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll take care of that, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, make sure that the comments from the last ordinance are reflected here as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. All right, now back to hearings, ordinance is second reading, number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida certain real property generally located north of Moss Park Road, south of State Road 528, and abutting the east side of State Road 417, comprised of 1,266 acres more or less, providing for severability, correction of scriveners' errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt. Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to pain management clinics, amending the city's land development code to define pain management clinics, prohibiting pain management clinics in all zoning districts except the industrial general district, prohibiting pain management clinics as accessory uses and home occupations, and prohibiting such clinics within certain distances of certain other land uses and identified transportation corridors, providing minimum site planning conditions for pain management clinics, providing for severability, codification, correction of scriveners' errors, and an effective date.
Some move. Second. Motion by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter? Commissioner Rings, we amended that the last meeting to include the additional areas that you wanted. So we're all set, right?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida certain real property generally located north of State Road 528, south of Lee Vista Boulevard, east of Narcoussi Road, and west of Chelsea Harbor Drive, comprised of 14.7 acres more or less, providing for severability, correction of scriveners' errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt. Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number five, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the planned development zoning district regulations for certain real property generally located north of West Oak Ridge Road, south of Interstate Highway 4, east of Florida Turnpike, and west of Millenia Boulevard, comprised of 73.5 acres more or less, of which 3.8 acres is conservation, amending and restating the planned development district's development program, allowable uses, site plan, and conditions of development, directing amendment of the official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scriveners' errors, and an effective date.
Some move. Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Rings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number six, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the city's adopted growth management plan to redesignate parcel D1C in the Millenia Development of Regional Impact, generally located to the east of Millenia Boulevard between Convoy Road and Millenia Plaza Way, comprised of 2.8 acres more or less, from office medium intensity to urban activity center on the city's official future land use maps, re-zoning the same land from O2 to AC2 on the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scriveners' errors, and an effective date.
Some move. Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Rings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Ordinance is first read, Madam Clerk. Number one.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to alcoholic beverages, amending the city's alcoholic beverages code by providing new and amended definitions, providing amended lawful hours of service, sale, and consumption of alcoholic beverages on Sundays, providing new and amended rules of evidence in the enforcement of the alcoholic beverage code, updating terminology, definitions, and cross-references throughout the alcoholic beverages code, deleting certain regulations relating to bottle clubs, providing for new penalties and methods of enforcement for violations of certain provisions of the alcoholic beverages code, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, codification, correction of scriveners' errors, and an effective date.
Some move. Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone in the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, Commissioner Stewart.
Pardon me, I've got a couple of quick questions. Generally speaking, I'm in favor of this. I guess probably the challenge I have in all of this is making sure that we're consistent with the county. The idea of going from the city to the county and the county back to the city has a great deal of concern to me in terms of this issue. But what also concerns me is that I believe that we, I would say, probably for the sake of civility, we probably are not enforcing this in many of our locations throughout the city. And I can't imagine that the county is enforcing theirs as well. So it seems to me that this brings us more in line with practice. We simply don't have, I don't think we have a public safety issue, so she, there's a concern with that. So it brings us in line with practice. I just can't imagine people going to the Grand Boheme at 10:00 and not getting a mimosa. And I can't imagine people on International Drive that aren't, we've got 84,000 hotel rooms, that they aren't actually doing something down there along the same lines. But it did bring up a question, I think Byron and I talked about briefly, was are there special entertainment districts within the county that may have their own alcohol beverages license, like International Drive, or anything around the theme parks or something like that?
We're trying, Commissioner, to be more consistent with everybody around us, including the county. And as I understand the county, they have, if you're serving in a restaurant, it's at 9:00, but if it's in a grocery store, I guess it's 11:00, right? But we thought for our purposes of enforcement, being consistent across the board on the sales made more sense so that somebody wasn't confused about can you sell at 11:00 or can you sell at 9:00 or 12:00?
And I agree with that. I just, it seems to me it's still inconsistent across the countywide. And I think we've done a good job kind of getting into that to make sure that we're not stepping out.
Well, the county folks have left. We could have sent a message back with them to change their ordinance as well.
I'm certain they're still listening. So anyway, I'm in favor of that. I appreciate your comments.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Mayor, thank you. I pretty much have the same concerns as Commissioner Stewart, but I also want to thank our staff for letting us know way in advance, because it gave me an opportunity to talk to my community. And it pretty much, there was a couple of exceptions, but for the most part, everybody agreed that we should maybe pretty much the county on this. We're not doing it exactly, but it's, you know, it's good enough for our businesses, it's good enough for our people, especially those who come from other countries and, you know, for helping not only them feel comfortable here in Orlando, but also helping our business people. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheen?
This is just an important economic development tool. I remember when I first got on council, we were debating Sunday alcohol sales, and we had a lot of businesses that were actually locating outside the city of Orlando to Orange County because their ordinance was less stringent, and we were losing out on business and annexations as well, because frankly, our laws were too restrictive. So I agree with this. I'd rather go to 7:00 AM, make it consistent across the board, but 9:00 AM is fine. And I'm glad that now the brunch bunch at Millenia is not going to get arrested.
That's right.
That's a good thing. So thank you.
Further comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Okay, number two, first read.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending chapter seven procurement code of the Code of the City of Orlando by creating section 7.1102, Veteran Business Enterprise Preference, Providing for Severability, Codification, Correction of Scriveners' Errors, and an Effective Date.
Move it forward. Second. Motion by Commissioner Lineum, second by Commissioner Sheen. Commissioners, I'm really proud of the way that this council, this city, has been taking an opportunity to try to make this the most veteran-friendly community in the entire country. And now we're taking steps to help provide jobs and opportunities for veterans. And I wanted to have the Chair of our Veterans Advisory Committee, Michael Waldron, come up and say a few words about this ordinance and anything else you'd like to talk about. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, City Commissioners. As you know, the Mayor's Veterans Advisory Council is made up of a group of volunteers that represent our community's veteran service organizations. I just want to recognize the blue shirts, our Executive Committee of the Council. You can recognize those handsome men in the background there. Last summer, the council adopted a vision to lead the country in being a veteran-friendly community right here in the city of Orlando. And we're well on our way. And this ordinance today will really help make that next step. We want these men and women, these service members, to know that when they come here to Central Florida, that they can come make the city of Orlando home, because there's tremendous opportunity for them and their families, whether it be educational, healthcare resources, job opportunities, or business opportunities. And to give these men and women an opportunity to be entrepreneurs, they're going to go out and hire more veterans. And we want them to come here to the city of Orlando, know that they've got a chance to compete. So we certainly appreciate you all's leadership. It's a pleasure to serve in this capacity and your support on this ordinance. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Lineum.
I just want to say thank you to Kevin Walsh, Deborah Drell, and your liaison, David. They worked hard, very hard, to get this done. And of course, the legal staff, we really appreciate it. And this was another collaborative effort, and you guys were awesome. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Lineum.
I want to add that Kevin gave me a copy of the proposed ordinance early on, and I was just very, very thankful for the way he structured it. But you know, to talk about veterans and to use the word homeless, it's like, it doesn't go together. It's not compatible. We should never have a homeless veteran except for mental health issues, and that person just simply rejects everything we have. I think every time we talk about a veteran, we ought to reverence the things they've done for us here at home and abroad. So anything we can do to level the playing field for everyone, I am absolutely in favor of it. But I remember when my son Sean came back from the Navy, they had the piece with the police department, I think it is. You've always had veterans preference, where however you did this little formula you had. But I think that makes sense that we do that. I now have a daughter-in-law in the Army, and I think about what they do all the time and how important it is. So this is a good thing for our city. We are moving. We were creeping and crawling, and now we're trying to trot, and I'm just very happy about where we're going. Thank you.
Let me get the testimony. All in favor of the appearance, card. Jessica Rivera.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Jessica Rivera, and I am a member of the Florida Association of Veteran-Owned Businesses. And I'm here today to speak in favor of the Veteran Business Enterprise Preference ordinance that you are going to be considering. Although we have made great strides in implementing economic development programs to enhance the opportunities of minorities and women, who better to live the American dream of business ownership than the ones who have defended the dream? The city of Orlando's MWB program and the blueprint have served as models for inclusiveness and have afforded opportunities for the disadvantage in the areas of business development and the procurement of goods. But it is time that we, as a community, recognize the value of veteran business owners as successful entrepreneurs and honor their sacrifice in service by affording them the same opportunities that exist for other groups. And I want to thank you in advance for your thoughtful consideration and for your service to our community. I have personally reached out several times to Commissioner Ortiz. And Commissioner Ortiz, thank you for always answering my calls, answering my emails, and for the support that you have showed to the Florida Association of Veteran-Owned Businesses. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jessica. Commissioner Stewart.
Mayor, pardon me. As I read through this, I apologize for being a little bit emotional, but I remember the service of Paul Hay. And it is not customary in our city to do this type of thing, but I would love to have us add an additional paragraph in the whereas, and that is to dedicate this particular ordinance in memory of Paul Hay and the service that he has made to the city of Orlando and the work that he has done in promoting veterans in our city. And I'd be glad to work with staff to provide that.
That is brilliant.
I'll second that, Commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
I'll work with staff.
You come up and go on every once in a while.
Well, I'll be gone after I turn 60. Is that okay with y'all? But I think, and I'll come up with the wording for that, and we'll add that in the whereas. It won't change any of the other stuff. But it does recognize that and has perpetuity in the city. We recognize his service and send a copy over to his widow, so.
Okay, I'm going to leave that in your hands.
I'll be glad to. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida designating certain land generally located north of Hargrave Street, south of Devere Street, east of Lake Baldwin Lane, and west of Yumahoe Boulevard, comprised of about 1.16 acres, as planned development district with the aircraft noise overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scriveners' errors, and an effective date.
Some move. Second. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the city's adopted growth management plan by updating figure CI14 to be entitled City of Orlando 2013 through 2018 Capital Improvement Element Capital Improvements Fund Schedule, amending policy 2.2.30 in the capital improvements element, providing for severability and an effective date.
Some move. Second. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number five.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando granting Bob Randolph Trucking and Loader Service, Inc., a non-exclusive franchise, provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the city of Orlando, outlining franchisees' duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
Some move. Second. Motion by Commissioner Rings, second by Commissioner Stewart.
I got one.
All right. Have I not been giving you the second?
Tony likes to laugh about it.
I know. There's evidence that the economy is coming back, including roll-off franchises again. Anyone want to discuss a roll-off franchise? Discussion among commissioners.
I'd like to say that Christine Kinsler, city staff, was responsible for this and the next one coming up. She's in our audience today, so thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine. Bring us more of these. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number six, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando granting Comfort House, Inc., a non-exclusive franchise, to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the city of Orlando, outlining franchisees' duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
Some move. Second. I think Commissioner Stewart might have got that motion. Second, Commissioner Ortiz.
I just had to do Comfort House.
I know. I thought they did something else other than roll-offs. All right, discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. The guys in the green shirts are here for this one. Okay.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to landscaping regulations, front yard vegetable gardens, tree protection, updating street tree requirements, buffer yards, landscape standards for one-family and two-family residential landscaping standards for multifamily and commercial development, and updating the approved tree and plant list, amending chapter 60 subdivision and landscaping by replacing Part II landscaping and tree protection in its entirety, amending chapter 66 definitions, providing for severability, codification, correction of scriveners' errors, amortization of existing front and street side yard vegetable gardens, and an effective date.
Some move. Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. This item will allow and support vegetable gardening in our community, ensuring Orlando furthers our path toward becoming a more sustainable community and one of the most environmentally conscious cities in our country. We have been working on this ordinance for almost a year and have had a multitude of meetings with stakeholders in the gardening community, task force meetings with our greenworks committees, open houses, individual meetings, and have tinkered and think we have come up with a pretty good product. And I would like Jason Burton, our chief planner, to give us an overview of the timeline and the recommendations. Jason.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, city Commissioners. My name's Jason Burton. I'm the chief planner with your city planning division. And today, I'm hopefully going to briefly go over our new landscaping ordinance, which really is a wholesale rewrite to all of the landscaping regulations within the city of Orlando. Goes from a 35-page ordinance to a 49-page ordinance. Most of the additional verbiage that you'll see in the new ordinance really adds a level of greater flexibility and options for development, and also allows us to put into their items that encourage water conservation and includes credit for more sustainable practices. And of course, this is landscaping regulations that deal with everything from single-family homes to commercial to industrial development. But one of the critical items that we've been wrestling with over the past year is vegetable gardens. And if you're familiar with vegetable gardens inside the city of Orlando, we have quite a few of them. And we want to support people that want to grow their own food at their home. We received a lot of information from around the country. Mayor Dyer actually received quite a bit of books from folks throughout the country just exhorting us to actually adopt some regulations that allow people to grow food on their own property. So, what we try to do is really narrowly tailor some items that allow people to do vegetable gardenings, but we're also concerned that we want to have maintenance standards to address and discourage people from having dead, overgrown plants in their front yard. So there's some maintenance standards that we actually got a lot of help from folks in writing in the ordinance as well. We just briefly wanted to go over a timeline of what's taken up to this date. Starting in January 2009 to about July of 2009, there is really a development of concepts for several stakeholders and landscape architects, includes trying to write a new approved plant list for the city of Orlando to remove invasive exotics and other plants that really aren't available or proper for climate, credit sustainable building practices, encourage water conservation, rewrite our buffer yards so that they're more urban, and also allow us to emphasize screening of those buffer yards, but not really separation of uses as we start to urbanize as a city. But what they did is they took all those concepts, and we took them to a stakeholder focus group in July of 2010. And about April 2011, there was an MPP consideration of the landscaping code as it was drafted with all those concepts within it. It took us a while to actually finalize that landscaping code in July 2012 because there were so many rules with the new overhaul of the landscaping code that we had to implement. Around fall of last year, the whole issue of front yard vegetable gardens kind of came to the forefront, and we took a concept in January to our municipal planning board about vegetable gardens exclusively since our previous drafts really did not address the issue. And February 25th of this year, we had city council consideration of those vegetable gardening rules as well as the remainder of the landscaping ordinance. And as Mayor Dyer wisely says, be part of the solution, not particularly part of the problem, we went back to a focus group exclusively on vegetable gardens, and we had the ability to have meetings with individuals and final drafting of this ordinance over the summer of 2013. On October 9th and 16th of this year, we also held open houses to kind of review and finalize those drafts. And here we are today for the city council's first reading of this particular ordinance and also second reading hopefully coming up, anticipated in December 9th. It's been advertised as a hearing for that particular date. There's also sunrise provision in the ordinance of April 1st, 2014, so people can learn how to apply these particular rules and go forward essentially. The essence of the ordinance is really less turf and more trees for water conservation, aesthetics, and a whole host of other issues so that we get better landscaping within the city of Orlando. Why? It's because we spend a lot of our potable water supplies on irrigation. 62% of our residential potable water supplies goes towards irrigation. And if you're familiar with the recent media coverage about water supply within our region, we are running out of water. We're one of the top 10 municipalities and regions in the country that is running out of water, according to U.S. News and Daily Report. We only have groundwater to survive on. We don't have really a really verbose infrastructure for water supply, and we're starting to talk about taking withdrawals from the St. John's River, which is a very expensive and legally challenging proposition. So what we're looking at as an overview for residential landscaping requirements is doing what Orange County and Winter Park have already done, which is limiting turf grass to 60% of the landscaping for single-family residential uses and others. Also requiring canopy trees on each lot since we're trying to meet a goal of having a 40% tree canopy within our city. Right now, we're somewhere around 24%, depends on what type of a study you look at. We're also concerned about having street trees adequately in our city as well. We don't require irrigation, but if we do have irrigation, we require some water conservation measures. And there's also some provisions for pollution control soils along our natural water bodies. Specifically towards vegetable gardening, specifically in the front yard, we allow vegetable gardening in front yards with development standards, and we're not really regulating folks' backyards. The reason is we really want to provide a level of permanent landscaping that will survive the weather conditions of central Florida and provide some aesthetic relief. It also is basically if you want to take out that 60% of front yard turf grass and replace that with vegetables, we think that's great. The remainder of the landscaping could even provide for permanent landscaping that is edible, such as fruit trees, rosemary, bushes, herbs, and perennials. And the idea here is really to treat turf and vegetable gardens quite equally since they're both water-intensive types of uses of the property. So with that, we came up with the idea of allowing 60%, up to 60%, not only for turf grass, but also for vegetable gardens as well in folks' front yards because of that water intensity. There's some specific regulations of how that interfaces with the street as well as your neighbor. So there's some regulations that we drew up in consultation with a focus group that of folks that came forward, including Mr. and Mrs. Helveston and other folks that testified at that February hearing, like Heather Traboo and Teresa Watkins, which was a horticulturalist that also spoke at that particular hearing as well. There's also some additional requirements that we reviewed is not to allow vegetable gardens in the public right-of-way, to get a more consistent treatment of the rights-of-way in your park strips and residential neighborhoods. We also want to make sure that people maintain the amount of minimum shade coverage on their site. And if folks don't maintain their garden or actively cultivate it for a period of three consecutive months, then let's plan it with permanent landscaping. And of course, everything is required to be maintained neat and orderly, just as we develop new maintenance regulations.
Jason, the first requirement doesn't inadvertently preclude our community gardens, does it?
No. The public right-of-way would be the park strips and whatnot, and then public properties such as community gardens are not on the public right-of-way. They're actually on city property. So it doesn't really preclude those from occurring on those sites. Commissioner Stewart also wanted to make sure that grading and swales for gardens and whatnot, and actually existing landscaping is designed to contain runoff on site and not effectively affect drainage to neighbors. So we included some language upon that and changes to the definition of agriculture to exempt personal vegetable gardens consistent with this proposal. And there's a sunrise provisions for April 1st, 2014, when the summer planning session generally comes into season at that point, and we're going to require those edge treatments to be incorporated in folks' gardens at that point in time. Now, now on to other things that occur in this particular landscaping code is that, you know, we want to credit all sorts of sustainability practices for non-residential multifamily development. And there's a new point-based system which allows flexibility for landscaping requirements to credit, you know, water conservation measures and preserving trees. Circle at the bottom of this calculator, you'll see, if you've noticed, the Easton Market, which just recently got written up in USA Today and the New York Times, they have some front yard vegetable gardens. Well, our new landscaping calculator will credit that in that little circle that you see down at the bottom. So we can continue on sustainable practices and continue to get written up in the New York Times for good things. Not to discredit this, but also buffer yards are going to be a little bit more urban, and the emphasis is upon screening and the amount of landscaping that goes in. Before some of these particular, the buffer yard D, for example, was a 50-foot buffer yard but didn't require any planting. So we're concentrating a little bit more on landscape screening rather than the separation of uses, depending on what type of uses being interfaced. And that's it. And if you have any questions for me, Ken Pellon, who was instrumental in writing this code, is also here with me today, and we'll take any questions.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, are we following SEPTED guidelines in terms of natural surveillance?
Yes. Rather than having limitations on heights of plants and whatnot, we wrote performance standards into the new code that require that you be able to see out your driveway, and this accounts for all sorts of landscaping, not just vegetable gardens. But also requires that you be able to see the address, for example, on a site, so you can't block on your house the address of vegetation, whether it be a vegetable garden or anything else.
Well, my concern is being able to see all your front from inside of your house. Is this covered?
Yes. It encourages that, but, you know, there are some specific things that you have to be able to see, like the front entrance from the street so it can be actively surveilled, as well as the address of a particular house and whatnot. As far as being just a blank canvas, you know, we want to encourage a certain amount of landscaping, you know, at least 40% shrubs and bushes. There, if something does get overgrown and not maintained on a particular site, we have a good maintenance standard that can be enforced against a particular property if you want.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Sheehan.
The interesting thing about SEPTED concerns is that, you know, where we've done the community gardens, actually over, especially over on Robinson in the, in my district, we were having a problem with crime in Festival Park. And now that people are gardening, they're out there all the time, they're out in the outdoors, and it's actually created a reduction in crime. So people out there in their front yards gardening is actually a good SEPTED practice, and I see the chief back there nodding his head. We want to get people out in their front yards participating, and, you know, we don't have as many front porches, but this is a great way to get people out there and paying attention. And I doubt anybody's going to be hiding behind my tomatoes. This is Florida. It's hard enough to get anything to grow, but, you know, I think this is actually a very good thing to get people out, interacting with one another, and everything that we've had happen in District 4 has been nothing but positive. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. We do have some parents' request cards. So Jennifer and Jason Helveston, you can come up in whatever order you want to.
I'm Jennifer Helveston, and I am a co-owner of the Home at the Front Yard Vegetable Garden. It has been well over a year since this all began. This has been both a challenge and a blessing to my family, and we are excited about moving forward. I wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak today and for this proposed ordinance that will allow us to keep our food source. We are truly grateful. Our garden is not only our food source, but is our way of life. It is a conscious decision that we have made to not only help with our financial situation, our health, and our community, but it is also a sustainable solution that Americans are looking for. People are realizing the importance of local food, and for the first time, they want to learn more. I see it daily, whether I'm in my front yard vegetable garden or at the church garden. People are not just curious about vegetable gardens, they want to get their hands dirty, and they want to learn how to grow their own food. So even though this ordinance will allow us to keep our vegetable garden, I challenge all of you not only to allow us to keep our vegetable garden, but to encourage edible gardens. Hunger is a real problem here in central Florida. 21% of Orlando residents are struggling with food hardships, making us the 10th hungriest city in America, and our state is the 12th hungriest. Florida is the 7th hungriest state for children. 30% of central Florida's children aren't able to access enough food on a daily basis. This is what our government calls food insecure. Well, it is possible to make these individuals secure. That is why I believe that the city of Orlando should be encouraging edible gardens, or at the very least, not preventing us from growing them. This is part of the solution for us and many others. We realized very early on that this was not just about saving our Patriot Garden, but about saving all of our vegetable gardens. If we continue to give food, it will feed us for the day, but if we learn how to grow food, it will feed us for generations. This is a good solution to a very real problem we are facing in our community. And I just wanted to thank the mayor and all of you Commissioners, the city staff. Everybody's been so wonderful, and we really thank you and all your efforts.
Thank you, Jennifer. Jason.
Thank you. Oh, well. Thank you again. I'm Jason Helveston. I want to thank you for permitting us to be a part of the process of this ordinance that will allow us.
Were you trying to put something up on the overhead?
Again, thanking you for allowing us to be a part of this process, to allow our food source. But since you mentioned that you do want to be a leader in sustainability, we are here today to kind of encourage more, to promote more than just allowing us to have our vegetable garden. And, you know, a little bit of a reason and history behind that is our particular situation here. To be honest, this has been somewhat difficult to not be defensive and emotional. It wasn't asked to, you know, we didn't ask this to happen, but we've tried to make the best of it. We never measurably impacted any others, not our neighbors, nobody, including the environment. We have consistently been voted the top two prettiest yards on our net industry, while the bottom three are owned by the government. Our houses are, kind of came to an issue with this because we basically, at the time that the code enforcement came after us, had to make a choice to saving our house or saving our garden. Because during these financial times and the economic depression, for a multitude of factors, we've not been able to meet our financial requirements on that house. And we started producing our food for that reason, because it just made financial sense to us. So we literally had to make a choice to fight harder for our house or to fight harder for our food, and we chose food. And the main reason for that is because we need that every day to survive. But it also was the amazing support from everybody else. We realized we weren't just fighting for our food, we were fighting for everybody's food. The irony with that, and almost losing our house, and still might happen, is the property value will plub it much greater with the foreclosure than it ever would with our front yard garden. We also had to close our sustainable business for a multitude of reasons, but one of the main reasons that broke the camel's back was the constant harassment by code enforcement. They gave us a business tax receipt violation during this trying times, basically for giving too many tours in our garden because everybody was curious of what it looked like. That's ridiculous. We hope the city didn't mean to do all this, but we wanted to show that, you know, there's implications to your actions and decisions, not just yours, but other members of the city. And we'd like to say, we want this to mean more than just allowing our vegetable gardens. This really affected, out of 48 pages, there's a small bit about vegetable gardens. And it all came about, about basically, less than 1% of the front yards of the city are vegetable gardens, and that's what this is all about. The vegetable garden section is buried in the middle. It should be very easy to find and very, very promoting vegetables. Oh, excellent. Did it come up? There's our picture. But here's a quick illustration, if you can adjust that in terms of focus, of how the, basically, the benefits and the aesthetic debate were balanced in the beginning of this. And it was heavily weighted on the aesthetic side. And luckily, through this process, that is balanced more. But what we're asking is, it really should be balanced completely the other way so that the aesthetic debate is really recognized. We want to be the beautiful city in America, that we are, but at the same time, we don't want it to go that far. Basically, we're asking you to please make this work. Do more than just allow our vegetable gardens. In addition to the ordinance, do more to be a leader in food security and sustainability. And now something with this. You know, there's so many things that you can run with this to make this city great in conjunction with just allowing our vegetable garden. Nothing of that sort has been mentioned. Let people know that we want them to plant vegetable gardens, not that we just allow them to. So I'm asking you, before the next meeting, and we do our final vote, to ask yourselves, and I'm asking you, what do you plan to do to be the true leader in food security and sustainability and not just allowing it? And that's really what I'm asking you. Can we make this a bigger, more important deal than the year that it's basically taken up to do? Thank you very much, and have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I have one more card. Ari Bergill. I have one more card, Ari Bargil.
I'll be brief. I'd like to thank...
You can state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ari Bargil, B-A-R-G-I-L. My address is 4812 Pine Tree Drive, Miami, Florida. I am an attorney with the Institute for Justice's Florida Chapter located in Miami. We are a national public interest law firm that engages in litigation and advocacy on behalf of private property rights throughout the United States. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak here today. Nearly one year ago, I stood before the Orlando Municipal Planning Board to speak on behalf of Jason and Jennifer Halveston. They had been threatened with severe daily fines for engaging in the very simple and harmless act of planting vegetables in their front yard. I said then, as I say now, that the Halvestons and all Americans have the constitutional right to put their property to a peaceful, productive use without the arbitrary interference of the government, and I'm glad that you all, for the most part, seem to have agreed. Zoning ordinances need to be limited to restrictions that are necessary to protect public health and safety, and that's why I appear again today before the city to commend its leaders where it has remained within that framework and to note a couple areas where the city still must improve if it wishes to fully respect property rights on its way to becoming the greenest city in America. This is a major step in the right direction. There's now an explicit acceptance for front yard vegetable gardens in the city's code. There are sensible restrictions to account for ingress and egress, you know, planting on public rights of way, and ensuring that perimeters of properties are not encumbered by plantings or vegetables or anything along those lines. Likewise, to allow for, or to ensure that first responders and police can see, can engage in proper surveillance and can see housing numbers that they're looking to serve. These sort of things make sense, and they're the kind of things that we encouraged the city to adopt a year ago. But there are still ways to go, and instead of stopping with some of these basic restrictions that limit gardens to areas that don't impede rights of way and things along those lines, there are a lot of other limitations and restrictions. Gardens can't exceed 60% of total pervious surface area of a property. These are aesthetics-based restrictions, and what that means for people with smaller yards and presumably the people who would want to grow their food and need to grow their food the most, that means that those folks are the ones who are going to be limited to the smallest yields. There's also a new point system that takes the place of some of the old confusion, and while that might have been designed to create a more formulaic and consistently applied set of standards, there are a lot of concerns that are associated with that. It's contributed to a very, very lengthy, complicated, and difficult-to-understand code. You shouldn't really need to have a lot of background expertise and a scientific calculator in order to understand what it is that you can and can't plant in your own yard. I think that's problematic for a number of reasons, potentially even legal ones. But I want to reiterate, this is a step in the right direction. Six days ago, the Institute for Justice filed a lawsuit against the City of Miami Shores, Florida, challenging the constitutionality of their ban on front yard vegetable gardens. Orlando can remain a model for cities looking for guidance on how to reconcile private property rights with a developing nationwide movement of people who are more concerned about the source of their food and who want to be more involved in where their food comes from. With proper policy, which reflects a firm recognition of property rights, Orlando can continue to be and will be a model for cities across the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards that we have. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, and so the motion carries. All right, that concludes formal business of the Orlando City Council today. I thank you for tuning in.
Mayor, are we coming to their house for Thanksgiving?